Okay. Are we live? All right. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Bethel Board of Selectment Order for Wednesday, December 5th, 2017. And please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business, public comments. And I think you folks are all on the agenda, so we'll skip that. You'll have your comments later. Correspondence. There's one new piece of correspondence that's actually from me. I'm gonna pass this out to you. And this is not something that I expect that we would talk about tonight. What this is, we already have 13 new items under new business. So rather than make the agenda longer than it already is, I'll give this to you for your reading, and we'll consider this at a future date. This is a proposal to establish a conservation committee, a steering committee, to create something, because we have to go through the charter process pretty soon. So that's all there is under, there was nothing else under correspondence, right, Dionne?
No.
Okay. First order of official business then is minutes of the special meeting of Tuesday, November 14th. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion. We accept the minutes of that meeting.
You have the second. I wasn't there.
Oh, that's right. I'll second that. Rich will abstain. Any changes?
No.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So two ayes, one abstention. First selectman's report, owing to the long agenda, I'm gonna make my remarks even briefer than usual. I just want to offer my congratulations to Rich and Paul. And, you know, we had our very wonderful swearing-in ceremony the other night. And thank you to Dionne Craig for all your work and putting that together, and the other people who volunteered. Mrs. Neville and Commander Duennels, Mr. Troetti. So everybody put together a really nice ceremony. I want to thank all the folks who had served for the past two years or four years. Thank them for their service to the town. And congratulate and welcome all the new folks who have either been newly elected or re-elected, and look forward to another successful two years. So thank you very much. You guys have anything else you wanted to add?
No.
All right. Okay, on to new business. Item number one, consideration of purchase of 10 Worcester Street. And I will turn the floor over to Beth Kavagna, who is our planning director.
Hi. I believe that you all have a package. Just to give you a little backstory on that, we were approached in the Land Use Office by the owner of the property after he had looked into possibly developing it as far as a possible purchase by the town through Town Use. I've enclosed in there a copy of the field card, so you have that for your information. Also, the matter was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've included a copy of their minutes, basically from their meeting, what they were suggesting, that they would be more than happy to give more than around 10% of whatever the purchase price is, with the understanding that if the property is not partially used, at least for open space, whether it be a pocket park, whether it be a possible bandstand or something like that, that the open space account would be reimbursed. Now, going into that a little bit further, what I did was, and please excuse me, the GIS system is down, so I had to resort to some of our basic maths, just to make sure that you're all familiar with the property, in relation to the municipal campus. It consists of approximately half an acre. It's located in the commercial zone, so it's still part of that commercial part of the downtown area. The property owner at one point did do some design drawings. I do have some engineer drawings. I have survey and things of that nature that you may possibly need in looking into this further. I also have a copy of our previous 2007 plan of conservation and development, talking about municipal center. I call it municipal center campus, because we have such a variety of different uses within inside the building. Without getting into real particulars as far as uses for the property, again, land is of such value in the downtown area. Our municipal center is so widely used by so many different facets of the population. I can think of a number of uses that would be appropriate on the property. One, what I just mentioned, a pocket car, bandstand for concerts. We've been talking about a teen center and possibly putting an addition on this building for a teen center. We also have some educational components that are going on in the building now. Various segments of the Board of Education are using rooms and pro-access for tutoring, things of that nature. I truly believe that the town considers the front of this building sacred as far as the lawn. So I think in the future, if we ever wanted to do additions and things of that nature, it would require a lot of work. Whereas, I think it's important for us to think of future expansions and needs of the facility, and I think this property presents a perfect opportunity. That's all I have to say.
That's a succinct presentation. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions on this?
I think it's one in a lifetime opportunity for the town to get a hold of this property. You know, if not, it'll go on the market. Sale would probably be a multiple-family housing unit in the future, or it could also be a business, according to Beth there, because it's in the commercial zone. I would be in favor of proceeding with this possibility of acquiring this piece of property.
Okay. Paul, do you have a comment?
Yeah. Beth, just a quick question. The assessed value is what? I'm looking for it here.
Better market value right now is 322,140.
I didn't hear you.
322,140.
322.
Fair market value. Assessed value is 225,500, but that's being changed now.
Yeah.
Is that the latest, the new rebalance?
This is what's on record still now.
Okay. So that's the 2016.
That's correct.
Well, I agree with what Richie has said, that, you know, it's sort of a sacred piece of property that would be conducive to the use of the municipal center. No question about that. My only concern is, is this the right price? And probably it's pretty close to it. And Beth, maybe you can talk about that a little bit.
I prefer to leave price negotiating and things of that nature to the Board of Selectmen and Council for review as far as making offers. I'm uncomfortable with the financial aspect.
Okay.
Okay.
But this is what this current owner is looking for?
I would tell you that in conversation I've had with the owner, is that something that I share?
Probably not.
I was contacted by an attorney's office yesterday, wanting more information to where to send the contract. And I said, I think you're a little bit ahead.
Yes.
I told them, you know, there's a whole process that has to go through.
Okay.
And I explained that to the owner.
Okay.
But Paul, if I can just address something to you. I mean, that's in its current configuration.
Right, right.
But if someone was gonna put 12 units in there.
Oh, I understand.
I mean, the property would be worth a lot more money.
Sure, sure. I understand.
Unfortunately, that's what we probably would have to deal with.
Yeah.
And I do have design drawings that show that feasibility.
Yeah.
So for appraisal purposes, I don't know if that's helpful to whatever you all decide is acceptable.
Yeah.
I think it would.
I'd be more than happy to share that with anybody.
What was proposed there?
16 units.
Oh, 16 units.
Yes.
Ouch. Okay.
All right.
But I'm taking that out of the equation.
Yeah, no, I know.
I like to look at it from a point of view as it's a need for us.
Well, it's inevitable, you know, this center right now, we have shortage of parking as it is in the back there. I wouldn't want to avoid passing on this stuff.
And, you know, and the biggest thing, I think, is the opportunity.
Yeah, I agree.
Marty, what did you say the estimated market value is?
322.
According to the last assessment, 322,000.
Three, okay.
There's a packet inside there.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No. Where do we go from here now?
Well, I think what I'd like to do is make a motion that we accept this, take it under advisement, and for further analysis, I would like to get a recommendation from the Park and Rec Commission, too, or Park and Rec Department, as to possible uses, and if that would be, what those uses might be.
Okay.
So I'll put that on the floor. Is a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries. So now, obviously, they're gonna want an answer fairly soon, so we'll start the process going, but we'll be thorough in our due diligence.
I had spoken to the director of Park and Rec.
Yeah.
And I tried to do anything. I spoke about Eileen's reference to this.
Yeah.
And one of those were her recommendations.
Okay.
Were you saying a pocket park?
I call it a pocket park. It's kind of a whole world carloa field, or something of that nature. It's just a small, little park area with some interactive recreational things for kids to play on, benches, things of that nature, a stopping place.
Would that assume that the building's taken down?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Beth before we move on? All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll get that over, we'll take care of that. Item number two, presentation from the Economic Development Commission. I'd like to welcome Janice and Kevin. Floor is yours.
I have a presentation.
Yes.
It says business incentives. So the Economic Development Commission has been working on this business incentive program probably for about a year and a year and a half. I just want to kind of run through the presentation. With Marty's help, we have also drafted an ordinance, which I have included on your desk as well. So why should Bethel consider a deferral assessment increase ordinance? Site selectors target towns and cities that offer business incentives. Currently, we are not on any of the site selectors lists in terms of offering our community to prospective businesses.
Are these, you want me to wait till the end for questions?
You can ask questions at any time.
Okay, a site selector is a web-based app?
Not necessarily, no. There are people with that, their professions are site selectors.
Okay.
And there's also organizations like CIRP that does site selection as part of their business model. So one of the criteria that these site selectors use is, is there a business incentive program within that town or city that they may be looking at? So currently, we are not, we are not even on that list, because we are not, we currently don't offer business incentives. If we did, it would provide us opportunities to go out to site selectors and say, hey, we're offering these business incentive programs now. And then that could help move us on to those lists that we're currently not on. To incentivize commercial industrial mixed-use development in areas like Clark Business Park, Route 6, and the TOD overlay zone, this will not include residential. I'll probably say that a million times, but it does not include residential. We are solely focused on commercial development. Allow us to market Bethel as a place to do business, and to be competitive with other towns in attracting and retaining business. Half of the other towns in our 10-town region offer deferral assessment increases like Danbury, Newtown, Brookfield, Ridgefield, and New Millford. And there's surrounding towns around Bethel. Bethel offer deferral assessments that we compete with as well, which is Danbury, Newtown, Ridgefield, Brookfield, Monroe, Trumbull, and New Millford. And Bethel currently is losing business to its biggest competitor, the commission, who believes is Danbury. Success in other towns, we looked at Danbury and Newtown most specifically, because we felt those were our largest competitors, Danbury being the largest. Danbury has been due deferral since 2013. In 2013, they did the LUMO, and they built 195,000 square-foot headquarters that had an assessment of 13 million, and they brought in 1,400 employees. And Kennedy Flats in 2015, which was just a residential development, did not have a commercial aspect. And as I said, we won't be incentivizing residential development, but that assessment was at 28 million. In Newtown, they've had 14 deferrals since 2006. And if you just think about Route 6, where they're putting in all of the medical facilities, most of those medical facilities came in under a deferral assessment. And I've outlined some of those here for you. And you can see the assessments, you know, range the around, you know, 4 million and up, and the square footage that they've been able to bring in has been about 19 to up to 26,000 square feet, in terms of individual buildings. So the goal is to develop a business incentive plan that is in line with other municipalities in the region, and expands Bethel's commercial base by attracting new businesses, retaining existing businesses, by providing them the ability to expand their business, and to incentivize commercial industrial development and expansion. One of those areas being Route 6, we have opportunities in Route 6 for new development, as well as in our TOD area. So the purpose is to offer deferral assessment increases for real property attributable to new commercial or industrial construction or improvements, to encourage economic development within the town of Bethel. In terms of eligibility, it's real property and all improvements to be constructed to real property for the following uses: office, retail, manufacturing, warehouse, storage, or distribution, structured, multi-level parking use necessary in connection with a mass transit system, information technology, recreation facilities, transportation facilities, and transient residential use and mixed-use development. And these are really designed around the state statute. We did eliminate residential, and there were a couple residential-type uses that we eliminated from our eligibility. In terms of the deferral schedule, and again, this is cost of improvement, so if you have a property without a building in it, or you have a property that you're improving the building, or you're doing an expansion on the building, it's the improvement of that property that will be eligible for the deferral. So if the cost of improvements is 0 to 99,999, we are not going to be offering, we are not going to be offering a deferral for those. If it's 100,000 to 499, it would be up to three years, 50% of the increase in assessment. 500 to 2,999, 999, up to two years, 100% of the increase in assessment. And 3 million and over would be up to seven years, 100% of the increase in assessment. And just to give you a little idea, this was really taken from Danbury. This is very similar to Danbury's deferral program. The only difference is, Danbury starts their cost of improvements at $10,000. The commission felt that was a little low, and that they wanted to start the deferrals at $100,000, and really focus on those larger projects. In terms of the process, an application will be submitted to the EDC. I will be taking on primarily the administration of it, so I would accept those applications. I will bring those applications to the EDC. The EDC will review the application, and forward the application along with a recommendation to the selectmen within 60 days of receipt. Upon receipt of the application and the report from the EDC, the selectmen shall approve, reject, or return the application to the EDC for further information. If an application is rejected, the selectmen shall state the reason, and the applicant may file a revised application to the EDC. In the event of approval, the selectmen shall adopt a resolution authorizing the first selectman to enter into an agreement with the owner or EDC of the property. I also, as I mentioned, included a copy of the ordinance that Marty had words with the commission on. The language in the ordinance fits the presentation. It's the presentation which was the scaled-down version of the ordinance, but it talks about what the goal would be, what the process could be, and what the uses would be for Bethel.
A couple of questions. Let me go back to the previous page. So where it says maximum percentage on the deferral schedule?
Yeah.
So it says up to three years. Does that indicate that the selectmen can choose less than three years, less than the full timeframe?
Yes, there would be a recommendation. You would receive a recommendation from the EDC.
Okay.
The selectmen would have the ability to offer a different, up to the three years, but offered, not, doesn't necessarily have to be the full three years.
Okay. Is that, would they also, is it up to 100% of the?
It would be 100%.
That would be 100%. How does that compare with the other towns that you listed on the front page?
It's comparable. They're all very similar.
Yeah.
Danbury's reads the same exact way, and Newtown's does as well. You can look at any of the other towns, Brookfield, New Millford, all, I mean, we read the one as far as Oxford and up north, and they all read similar. And Marty may be able to comment on that a little bit now.
Yeah, it's just the same. It's almost all of them are very, they're very similar. The only difference is how you allocate the amounts. That's about it.
So, okay, so the, so EDC would then make a recommendation on the time, on how long the deferral would last? But it's gonna be either 50% or 100%, correct? Okay. Well, that explains that number I was talking about before the meeting started with Newtown, definitely. Okay, interesting. Do you guys have questions?
Janet, on the, on the multiple use?
Yeah.
Or in the overlay areas?
Yeah.
If you have, you would have residential in some of those particular buildings, wouldn't you?
Maybe deferral would not apply residential at all in any of the zones.
In any of it?
Right.
So if someone was coming in on the TOD where they were doing residential above the commercial downstairs?
Now, that would, because that's considered a mixed use.
Right, right. That's what I was mentioning.
So the whole project, the residential with the commercial would be eligible for the deferral.
And it's just that, in those projects, you know, something similar to what happened out in Stony Hill, they ended up building the residential first, and the commercial got way late. So I just want to make sure that.
It would be the definition of mixed use through planning and zoning, with the definition is commercial on the bottom and residential on the top.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
So they can't just build the residential and leave the commercial nowhere, so.
And if they did do that, then only the commercial part of that project would be eligible for the deferral.
Oh, okay.
Could be eligible for the deferral.
Oh, okay. All right. So the residential most likely would.
Unless it's a true mixed use, then the residential portion would not be eligible.
Oh, okay.
Can I ask a question of Beth? Beth's here. Have we actually had a building go up with the mixed use?
No, we haven't started the TOD yet.
No, but I mean, the other ones, the one that's out of Copper Plaza's never been built, right?
The front portion, well, Rich was just speaking about that. They haven't done that, so.
No.
Okay. Paul?
Yeah, you know, this is something that I've been in favor of, been talking about, because you look at our revenue sources, I want to say it's really 80, 85% of our revenue is residential. And, you know, in order for a town to grow, and you can't put the tax burden consistently on the homeowners, and this is an opportunity. I think we have to look at this very carefully, but I really definitely want to go very, very much forward with this.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, we're just, we see, we're losing out on Route 6 there.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, they're just going over into Newtown, and they're, you know, building after building is going up there, and we're not capitalizing on any of the.
Absolutely.
And we've even seen that from Danbury, where they just go with the border, and Danbury's offering them incentives, and we can't compete with that. We just can't compete with that.
In the EDC discussions, was there any concern expressed by any of the members about ruffling the feathers, or leaving somebody out who might have just moved, who would have otherwise been eligible if we had this program, and having them say, hey, what about me?
I don't think that came up at all. Our goal is to, you know, be part of the game.
Okay.
We are just in the game at all.
Yeah. All right.
We really haven't had anybody come in, put up a big building yet.
No, and there were.
When Davenport came in, and basically, I took it as threatening to, well, you know, go through with this or provide this, we're just gonna make it a bus park.
Well, this may also incentivize, but as we're gonna, thinking about exploring Clark Park, we have three or four lots there. And, you know, any major corporation that wants to come in, of course, this has got to be on the books before we could initiate something like that.
Right.
But it's at least the knowledge that is coming out, you know?
Right.
There's a strong possibility that coming out, we've had a lot of interest from developers, and it's been great to be able to say, we have an EDC, they're working on this, it's going through the process.
All right.
Does the board of selectmen just adopt this, or do we have to go public hearing?
I don't think so.
And what about the Board of Finance?
You gotta have, it's just, it's an ordinance.
Yeah, so.
You gotta have a public hearing, and the whole bit's gotta be published.
What I would propose that we do is.
Discuss this with Board of Finance first, right?
Well, no, Board of Finance doesn't have any, they have no jurisdiction over that. It's an ordinance. What I would suggest we do is take one cycle to read through the ordinance that the town attorney has prepared, and plan to vote on this formally at our next meeting, which is December 19th, and at that time, set a date for a public hearing and move forward.
Good.
All right. So I'll make that motion that we defer to, we table this to a vote on December 19th. Second. All right? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great.
Great.
Janice?
Great. Thank you.
I don't have the final thing that you did up, because I still have all the changes.
I have it.
So do you have a chance? And also, can I have a copy of the?
I'll give you the paper copy, but I'll give you an electronic copy.
Yeah, but also give me a copy of your presentation.
I will.
Janice? I have another second one.
Great, thank you.
Oh, you got two?
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. So item number three is, Janice Christianeck, you are still up.
So Eileen couldn't be here, so I volunteer to present. And I'm here to help. So I, Eileen and I have been working on putting together a food truck unit, as you're probably aware, food trucks have become very popular. And we really didn't have the process for handling them outside of special events. So what we wanted to do was offer the opportunity, since we currently don't have any food concessions at McCowar Park, to offer seasonal permits for food trucks, limited seasonal permits for food trucks from the months of May through October, which could allow from one to three food trucks during the hours of 8:00 to 8:00, AM to 8:00 PM, May through October, to set up and to vend food from their trucks. It would provide, it would be, what the recommendation is, is to, that the trucks would provide a monthly fee of $200 per truck, which would be payable on the 15th of the month, but this fee does not include the cost of a food license, so they would have.
Excuse me, does somebody have this in writing? Because I don't have this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. And the fee does, as I said, the fee would not include the cost of a food license. Applications would be available on January 1st in the Parks and Rec Department and on the town website. All applications would be received by February 28th, and food vendors would be notified on March 15th. In terms of requirement, all food trucks would be required to meet all statements of the health department. Requirements, they must have a current food license and driver's license. The mobile food truck must be an actual vehicle, and not a cart or a trailer. It must be equipped with waste receptacles for use by its customers, and shall discard any garbage attributed from the truck's service off-site. They should adhere to the McCowar Park hour of operation, respect the park code of contact, and park in the designated parking spaces, which have been outlined below, and that they would be, they would be given a certain parking space. And each vendor will have no more than two parking spots to conduct their business. And the use of loudspeakers for projecting either voice or music would be prohibited. We would also like to, at least for year one, limit it to Bethel food trucks, so food trucks that are licensed in Bethel, we would like to limit it, which could be two or just three trucks, and after the first year, possibly open it up to other food trucks. But for the first year, we would really like to offer the opportunity to Bethel food truck businesses. And the second page is the food truck application. So the application will go to the Parks and Rec Department. They would review, they would set up for payment, and they would notify and work with the food truck vendors directly.
Why are we eliminating the carts or trailers?
It's a good question. I just think the food trucks in general provide more a professional business environment, and are more equipped to handle trash and handle some of the resources that a park or some other type of food vendor would provide.
Well, I was gonna ask, one of the most popular trucks in the summer series is rice Well, I was gonna ask, one of the most popular trucks in the summer series is rice and beans, so they have a vehicle and a trailer. Would they be included, or no?
Well, first, because they're not a Bevel food truck. If we went with only offering it to Bevel food trucks, then they wouldn't be eligible there. If they could fit all of that into parking spaces-
Oh, I see, it's a space, okay.
Because their main producing is within the truck.
Okay.
You know, so they can have receptacles, and they can have, you know, all of the equipment that you would need to be able to perform.
For the town attorney, it's a noble goal, but is it legal to restrict something like this to local business?
I think you're gonna have a lot of problems with that.
Okay.
I was not aware that we were going to this type of situation. I was, everything that I've seen up until this came back up was that it was gonna be RFPs, we were gonna bid on it. This is completely different than what was originally discussed.
Okay. Well, I know Park and Rec has talked about this for a long time, so-
The other problem I have is, I don't know how you're just gonna restrict it to McCower. I don't, I mean, we have other parks in town. I mean, how do you just say we're only gonna do it to McCower? You're gonna get somebody knocking on the door sooner or later.
Well, Beth, is this consistent?
Well, first of all, when this all started, they came to the Planning and Zoning Commission with this idea and this concept, and again, it's that phrase of using special event. It's a seasonal event, sponsored by the town, just like our food trucks are sponsored by the town out here on the front lawn. So, it's just trying to recognize this trend in the towns and society that's going out with food trucks, but at the same, and allow them to congregate in, by trial. Try it over at McCower Park and see what happens from there.
Yeah, and I think one of the reasons why we selected McCower Park was because it's not downtown and it's not on Route Six.
Right.
There's really no other businesses that serve food in that area, and we really wanted to keep it away from possibly taking business from other restaurants, either in downtown or on Route Six. So, McCower Park seemed like, you know, it's kind of in the middle, and it's not in either location, so it would be a good location to do that.
Marty, does it give us any, any help if we, if we say, out of all the parks, there's only two parks that have a parking lot? Like, you couldn't do this at Parloa, because there's no lot, you know, you can't-
Sure there is.
Yeah, that's a, yeah.
Oh, around the back, around the back.
Plus, I even think up at the town overlook, if you can drive your vehicle up there, there's places to park.
Well, and we've looked at other communities that do that, and they do assign a spot for the trucks to go to.
Yeah.
And it's done by permit. So, I think it's pretty common around the towns that have been doing this and the cities that have been doing this, is they designate a spot, and that's the spot that they apply the permit for.
In speaking with Eileen, it was interesting, because going back to your original comment, Marty, about limiting it to town businesses registered in the town and things like that. I said to Eileen, I said, "Well, what happens if you get twelve trucks that want to go and park in McCower?" You know, what, how do you decide who gets what? Because obviously, twelve trucks can't go there. And she was using the basic premise of scheduling, like, she schedules teams for ball fields and things like that. She was saying, you know, "Okay, well, then Monday, Tuesday, Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, these three trucks can go there, Tuesday, Thursday," and alternating. It was interesting, just to see how she came up with what she did, in case we run into that type of a situation.
Yeah, the idea would be to try to accommodate them all based on scheduling. And so, in the application, it has hours of operation that you're available, and days that you're doing the full weekend that you would be available. So, that she could schedule, rather than eliminate the possibility. We had four trucks, you know, to be able to always have three trucks there, but be able to provide the opportunity of four trucks, if that was, if that was my assumption. I don't think we have four Bevel food trucks.
Based on the, on the conversations with the vendors who came to us and wanted to do this last summer, do we anticipate that there would be food trucks that would want to be there every day, or just a weekend?
No.
Just weekends?
They each have kind of their routes of where they go.
Yeah.
So, there would probably be a few days within the week that they would want to be there, but definitely not every day.
Yeah, okay.
I'd make a motion to table and ask Marty to look at the legality of us, you know, owning same vehicles and the carts or trailers could do it, and also, you know, limit it to the local residents.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm always looking for revenue, everybody knows that.
Well, I'm in favor of doing this.
Yeah, you know, the question I've got, I said, "We have these, sometimes these sporting events or special events even at the high school." You know, I would always like to license these vendors. You know, if we're gonna have a license for McCower, let's do it town-wide. You know, I would say, not to pick on an organization, but like Special Olympics, okay? It's the only thing that comes to my mind right now. You know, they may have vendors there, but they're using our facility, and, you know, I've got to prepare that park and clean up that park, but I really looking for sort of a universal type license for vendors. That's just a thought, Marty.
You have to be careful, though, because a lot of those events that occur at the high school, there will be school support groups that are-
Oh, I understand that, but if there's anything over and above-
Over and above?
Oh, right.
Okay, well, we can-
You're on a very tricky slope, because you're talking about two different things. You're talking about a vendor permit, which is issued through the First Selectment's office, whereas we're talking more of like a special event food truck, you know, there's- Other things are governing, I think, this food truck thing versus a straight vending permit from the First Selectment's office. Again, a little involvement from Park and Rec, from zoning, you know, identifying this as the area Park and Rec is willing to take the responsibility on for issuing these food truck permits. Am I correct, Marty?
Well, yes.
I mean, there's a vending, you know, right? I mean, I'm just saying about the vending permit. Vending is done through your office.
I had a question, because I'm gonna direct it to Beth, because you said you spoke to Eileen on this. So, if everybody has a license and everybody is a resident, or, I don't know how you make the determination they're a Bevel business, but assuming that you get past that hurdle and you say yes, is everybody gonna be approved? She's gonna sit down and she's gonna do up a schedule to make everybody happy? Because she's got, you got on the form here, approval and disapproval. I'd like to know if you're gonna disapprove somebody, what it's gonna be on the basis.
What's the basis for?
That's right.
Yeah, no, I agree. No, that's a good, good point, we didn't discuss that.
Okay.
Yeah, and my assumption would be based on the requirements. So, they'd have to have a vending license, a driver's license, and it would have to be a mobile food truck. So, if it didn't fit those requirements, then she would probably try to schedule all of them.
Yeah, three hot dog trucks at the same time wouldn't work, you know?
Well, they're, you know, they're paying $200 a month, too, so if they're not selling the goods, they're not gonna continue going, yeah.
Okay, alright, so we have a motion on the floor to refer this to Marty for comments, and then we can put that on the nineteenth agenda, too. Any other, any other comments, questions? Alright, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Now, we're filling up Marty's schedule.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you very much. Janice and Kevin, thank you for coming tonight.
Good night.
Item number, item numbers four, five, and six, I am going to turn the floor over to Mr. Bill Craddy from the Energy Committee. What's that?
Seven.
Seven.
Oh, yeah, microgrid, okay, four, five, six, and seven. So, item number four is report and consideration of solar canopies for the municipal center.
Yes, mine is basically about revenue coming into the town and prevention of revenues going out of the town. First of all, the solar canopy, what we, what we'd like to do-
Thank you, Beth.
Is with the solar program, and what we've been doing is to put canopies on the back here, parking lot here, for solar, which would generate solar power for this building. And I've got some, some, this is just completed at Ludlow High School, what, what they have done, for example. And then here is a board encompassing one, which is Indicott College, and shows what can be done in terms of, of solar. Now, in these shots at Ludlow, you can see the room for trucks and cars, you know, and that there's no hindrance to traffic going around or whatever, and, you know, big trucks can go in there, everything. And also, put one in there of a night shot. The last one would show the type of lighting would be in there for night, visibility for people using that. But not only generating power for the town, for the building here, and place, and what we would purchase for this building, but also, it would provide cover for protection for automobiles and rain and snow and this kind of thing, so it sort of shelters them. And what we'd like to do is go on an RFP process to see what economics would be for that. Obviously, it would have to be one that would save the town money to be able to do that. So, this is what we're asking to do, would be for permission from the First Selectment to issue an RFP to, so, we've considered solar canopies in the school parks. But with another thing, I've got to talk about the microgrid. Don't wanna do too many things at one time, you know, because you have technology issues and conflicts which come up. I would like to do just the municipal center at this, this point in time.
This, I presume, is an artist's rendering?
No, it's actual pictures of Ludlow High School. You can go down Ludlow in Fairfield and see them.
I thought it was a rendering, because every single car is white.
Yeah. But yeah, this is, these are actually just completed up.
Oh, there's one, there's one dark blue one.
But to give you an idea of what they, what they look like, and this is pretty well situated from a positioning with the sun. We have very little conflict with, with trees over here in this one corner. But for the most part, it would be a very productive solar, solar system.
Okay.
And this would be funded by the town?
Well, it would be a purchase power type agreement. We wouldn't want to put up the money. It would be one where we would pay, pay for it by buying electricity at a lower cost and pay for it.
Yeah, similar to the solar farm.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, same, same kind of thing. We wouldn't, this one, the solar farm, had an original plan that the Selectment approved many years ago for the solar, for the energy plan for the town, there were three components. One was the landfill, the other was microgrid, and the other one was the, the performance contract.
Yeah, the Ameresco contract.
Yeah, this was not included in that, so we would have to go out for a separate RFP for, for this, then, then that other.
Alright.
It just wasn't thought of in the original.
Not contemplated.
Yeah, wasn't contemplated.
Alright.
Was there any thought of putting the panels on the existing building up here, rather than building structures there?
Well, where would we put them here on the building? We don't want to put them on the front of the building, have an aesthetic. I think we would have a lot of opposition for putting them on the roofs here in the front.
Well, you got the roof over the gymnasium, you got the roof over the-
Well, you could put some there also if you wanted, but can-
Well, I was just thinking, you're not building a lot of structure to-
Yeah, without structure, structure is concerned. The other is exposure to the sun, and if that's, if the gym has exposure to the sun, we could put some up there also, I mean, if we did the additional-
And you'd have to do the loading, just to see.
Yeah, and you have to look at the age of the roof and the condition of the roof and this kind of a thing. And so, we've sort of stayed away from roofs, because we got a lot of issues, and we found a lot of issues when we're going through the performance contract, with roofs on some of the buildings and everything. And rather than to complicate it, you know, the work or whatever, this we felt would be a good next step. We can always continue to do solar, you know, going down the road.
Phil, what is the longevity of these solar units?
Well, they're-
I know, it's a new, new technology.
Yeah, it's a new technology. The longevity has been rated by the industry and by the National Energy Renewable Lab anywhere from thirty to thirty-five years longevity. We look at twenty years as being reasonable. One thing which we'll talk about, there's another item on the agenda, this will fit in with, with, with the RFP on issue for the capacity payments for the landfill solar. It will be eligible, solar projects are eligible for capacity payments for the economic life not to exceed twenty-five years in the way that they're basically based upon. And I'll show you in a minute how that is calculated. So, this could be a good long-term benefit to get, capacity payments could either be worked into the financing or, you know, be separate, like we are doing at the landfill. If they're separate there, we would have a separate check coming in.
So, you would have to go out for RFP on this?
Yes, uh-huh.
So, do you need any upfront money, or is this would all be part of the-
No, just RFP, we put in RFP, and we identify what it is, we provide the electric bills, and then we get the proposals in, and, and the proposals will include what the cost is, how they're gonna fund it, and all these kinds of things. And then we would make a decision, come to you with recommendation of a decision as to which way to go. If none of them, if they don't come in, be an economic benefit.
Well, like, like the first RFPs we put out on the solar farm, didn't, yeah, they came-
Yeah, exactly.
I think we did it twice before we, we got the right ZREC number. Who's gonna develop the RFP?
I've got it already ninety-nine percent written.
Okay. Alright. Alright, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we approve development and issuance of RFP subject to town, town attorney approval, review and approval?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Alright, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries? Okay, now, item number five is RFP for capacity payments for the solar farm, and I've-
Yeah, and that's, that's what we're talking about here, and I'm done. And I've got to show you how, what the load profile is expected to be, and this is typical of solar systems, and how the capacity is calculated. But we're looking at projected as over one billion point down kilowatt hours be produced, generated by the solar farm. And if you look at the, the green shaded, the three green shaded areas, this is when the load on the ISO system hits its peak. And what solar is considered as a permanent reduction of load, of demand, like a generator would provide. So, what they do, we have two seasons in ISO. We have the summer season, which runs April through November, and the winter season, which runs December through March. And the yellow shaded areas are what are called the shoulder months of the summer, and then the winter season. And you can see in the winter season, the peak is between five and seven p.m., so there's really no benefits for solar in the winter. So, solar is a summer-only asset, and it's eligible for capacity payments. If you look at the second sheet, this is how the ISO calculates the capacity payments. You look at the green areas, and that's about four hundred and ninety-seven kilowatt of demand that we would be eligible for. Payments would be, meet the capacity requirements, I mean, that's how the capacity would be calculated. That would be the credit that we would get, and that would be the month that we would get paid. They pay the month of June based upon how June calculates out individually by totaling the kilowatt hours divided by the hours in the month. Play July, for how July is calculated, August, where it's calculated. And then for the shoulder months, September, October, November, and April and May, the payment is based upon the average of the three months. Now, this can vary based upon the sun and, you know, that kind of a thing. But this is based upon the National Energy Renewable TV Watch Solar Program. And based on, on that, the numbers that the landfill, roughly over the next three years, starting this summer, which starts June eighteen, over the next three years, we should get at least about fifty-two thousand dollars. And over the economic life, we should get well over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of payments based upon the capacity. Now, this, I took a very probably lowball in what I'm being asking for, is to go out for an RFP for finance to hire or to contract with a- for an RFP for, uh, finance to hire or to contract with a curtailment services provider for the ISO, because that's the only way that you can, you can, uh, participate is through a service provider. And it's gotta go out on a, on a, on a RFP, and there's about a very limited number of service providers that, that can respond, so we have to see what we get in, and they will be asked to provide, uh, their payment schedule, and base, payment schedule is basically a percentage of what the capacity payment is. Capacity payment is set three years forward by auction, at the ISO auction, and then the industry works basically on a percentage, whoever the current, uh, talent services provider is, they provide, they agree to give a percentage of, of, uh, what that is. And it could totally handle by finance, they just put it out and...
Is there, there's no upfront cost to, to the town with this?
No, there's no upfront cost. The only obligation is that, is that, um, this provider gets the meter data between one and five P.M. on the summer days, uh, at the end of the month, and that can be provided. We have on there, we'll have a, uh, we do have a metering system, we can get that, and they can even get the provider access to that or not. Now, I've also got to declare that I have a conflict, I cannot be involved in this, in the selection, uh, so it would be totally handled by finance.
Okay.
Be total by them.
So to paraphrase this, essentially, we're, we're putting out an RFP to select a provider who's gonna help us sell the excess energy.
Yeah, it's just like we have a, a...
Like a broker.
Provider consultant for, you know, for buying electricity, this type of thing. And this fits very well with, with the energy supplier Constellation, because Constellation, uh, has a creed that, that, uh, any solar, you know, we're not committed to buy a set amount of electricity from them, whatever the solar provides, that's fine.
Okay.
It's not subject to contract.
All right.
And we've had them meet with, 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 uh, Ogoski and everything to be sure that's the case.
All right. You've got the RFP written?
Yeah, I have the RFP written, but I have to give it to, to, to them and let them do with what they need to do with it.
Okay.
Give it to Marty.
Uh, we, we need this service even though we're taking credit.
Yeah, ISO won't deal with you unless you happen to have maybe about a two hundred and fifty megawatt generator.
Oh, so we're not, we're not big enough to deal directly?
They don't deal directly with retail customers.
Yeah.
It has to be through a current payment services provider. And basically, the provider has to, to, to bid for capacity and for a capacity auction. He's gotta acquire, afford, a capacity supply obligation. He's gotta put up substantial financial assurance, and it's like he gets a bucket, he's ordered a bucket of capacity, and he's gotta fill that bucket with all these marbles and, you know, which would be the different thing. If he doesn't fill it within his time, a lot of time period, the ISO takes his financial assurance.
Okay.
The, uh, solar farm we have right now, you said we have metering, uh, capable, or we do have metering?
We, we have meeting, we're gonna have metering...
And recording, as far as, uh...
We'll, we'll have real-time metering of the data, and what we want is access to that, to, you know, to the provider, access to go in and download and that's...
So you have real time, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Well, more questions?
But there is no out-of-pocket cost, upfront cost for the town.
Okay, I, I'll make a motion that we approve the request for, uh, RFP for capacity payments subject to town attorney review.
Second.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries? Okay, item number six, tier four generator.
Yeah, tier four generator at the high school. The federal government used to have...
You mean at the police station?
EPA, yeah, the police station, but the, the, under the federal air emissions regulations, the town had emergency generators enrolled in the demand response program, so when there's an emergency on the grid, they turn on the generator for that, got payments twelve months out of the year. Uh, Rich is familiar with this because they participated in this, it is, you know, at, uh, the, uh, Bethel out there. Um, now, and two years ago, the generating community doesn't like competition, competing for capacity, so they took the EPA to federal district court, uh, claim, uh, to, uh, to remove that ability to have emergency generators enrolled in, in the man response program. The district court, third district court agreed and vacated that out of the, out of the, out of the regulations. And they didn't agree, and, and they vacated it not on any environmental issues, but based upon the fact that they, that they claimed and the court upheld that EPA did not allow enough public hearing time to properly propagate the regulation. Now, with that, all the emergency generators came out of the market. Now, a generator, though, that's, that's, that's permitted for other than emergency use, can still participate and get payments. And to be permitted for, um, other than emergency use, you have to have a tier four emission standard, which is the latest federal government emission standards, um, on generators. And with that, then you can participate, and we could have the generator back in the program. From a revenue standpoint, using the numbers that, that the engineers for the, uh, police department building committee gave me, if their numbers are correct, the capacity benefits, both payment, actual cash payments, and reduction in the utility bill over the next three years could total about sixty thousand dollars. And again, they could continue, you know, every year, participate in the program, uh, because they could use the generator to do that. Now, more importantly, though, which I maintain, is that it enhances the reliability of the police department. Under the old regulation, federal regulation, you could turn on an emergency generator in anticipation of a storm coming, you know, that we might have some power failure like we had, you know, my smart, anticipate that you could turn on the generator. You can no longer turn on an emergency generator in anticipation of a pending storm. You have to wait until your power actually fails before you can turn the generator on.
Mm-hmm.
And generators, regardless of age, whatever, whoever makes them, ten percent of them fail to start. And so do you want to risk needing the generator, go turn it on the police department, the power, go down the generator and come on? Or do you want the capability to, to turn the generator on a couple hours in anticipation of the storm so that you know it's up and running? And that's what a tier four allows you to do, so it has two benefits, it has an economic benefit, plus it improves reliability of the power supply to the police department. So that's what we were, when, and we know that the building committee, uh, adopted the tier four regulation initially, but with all the cost issues coming out, they had to cut, and they cut back to a tier two because that's a cheaper generator, it doesn't have the emissions controls on it that a tier four has. So that's the, uh, reason, so what we were asking for is, out of the capital budget or non-recurring budget, is, is to pay the difference of a tier four versus a tier two.
Well, I, I wasn't, Rich, help me here, I thought they had a tier three originally.
Right, it's a tier three then.
Well, tier three or tier two is no different.
Really?
Yeah.
So it's, yeah, it's, uh, and, and the building committee, you know, because of the budget restraints here, voted to go with the tier three, and, uh, that's what's ordered, uh, currently, and so, you know, to go back now and change it, there's gonna be a, a upcharge to cancel that order.
You know, the...
And, and I, you know, I don't, I don't know if, if it's my own personal, I understand what you're telling us, Bill, but I, I don't think it's, uh, worth the money for, you know, you know, we have all the other programs, all the other generators. Any building should have been the, the tier four, should have been the high school, because that was...
I recommended that, and I pushed for that, and...
This is a smaller load thing here, so, you know, and, you know, they're, they're talking about they might want to go back to the board of finance for some more money for the police station, and, you know, this is just adding another eighty-five thousand dollars, plus maybe a little upcharge because they would have to cancel the order.
Has it been ordered?
Yes, it's been ordered. To my understanding, it's been ordered.
Entities have done that, I mean, it's not out of the ordinary, but they've had...
What, what's the revenue side of having a tier four? You said sixty thousand dollars a year?
Well, that's over the next three years based upon the capacity prices that, that we have.
And the additional cost is eighty-five thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Plus whatever charge is...
Plus, yeah.
Well, isn't there, isn't it true there's some maintenance cost issues too? Not issues, but there'd be some higher maintenance because of the amount of time it runs?
It runs more?
No, no.
No?
You'd probably only run it no more than fifty hours out of the year.
Okay.
And it is, you don't run it that much for demand response.
Okay.
But you, you can still, is, under the, the current law, you, they can still run it for the fifteen minutes or...
Only for testing.
For testing, right.
Only.
Right.
But nothing else.
Right.
That's all where you can run it. And oddly enough, you can, a, a generator, a tier two generator that was built before January, uh, one of two thousand and eleven, you can go out and spend the money and upgrade the emissions and make it a tier four. But federal regulation does not allow you to do that for a tier three. Any generator built after January one of two thousand and eleven, you are not permitted to upgrade because of the influence of Caterpillar and Cummings. They had a lot of old ones they needed to sell.
Well, I was gonna say, the current administration in Washington is deregulating as fast as they can, is this possible?
It could be, I don't know, you know, maybe they don't deregulate.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I'm, I'm missing something here. Uh, maybe you mentioned it and I didn't pick up on it. Why do they not allow you to run the generators in advance?
Because it's just the regulation.
The emissions?
I think I'm...
It's the regulations, an emergency generator...
What's the reason?
Uh, no reason. The emergency generation definition is that you can only run it when power fails, actually fails, and it's because of the emissions that dirty the air supposedly.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, you'd rather have wait till the power fails and turn on a whole bunch of generators than turn on some of them to keep the power from failing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's the knowledge or the logic.
Um, do you have any, uh, I would imagine that's, in, in your, in the committee, you've got some, uh, some written analysis of this, you know, cost benefit?
Yeah, I have, I have cost benefit on it.
Well, I, I think we should table this, and I want to find out what the numbers are with that and find out if this, how far along this order is, if it'd be, if it can be canceled, if it is economically feasible to cancel it, what the, what the charge might be, and we'll try to, we'll make a decision on this very quickly.
February, February, we will know what another year of savings will be, because February is when the ISO has the auction for the year twenty-one to twenty-two.
Okay.
Who's the manufacturer, is it Cat or is it, uh...
No, that, Cat, and that's another problem, is, is Caterpillar doesn't manufacture tier four in this size, Cummings doesn't, because they're still in the big size, but there is a company that does manufacture, it's a Volvo engine, that has manufactured specifically for tier four, and it's totally certified by EPA, federal...
Who's, who's the manufacturer?
I don't know who the manufacturer is of the one that, that they ordered.
It's, yeah, it's probably Caterpillar, the one they ordered.
You know, one of, one of the questions that came up, uh, for servicing the, the unit, as we're, you know, we currently have a, a vendor that service all...
Generac, right.
Well, or whoever it is that does all the town generators and...
Honeydew Power, which is a Generac dealer, right? They service and sell the tier four. They're right, you know, and Sheldon.
Look, just a quick question for you. Somebody told me that if you have a tier four, uh, the operation of it, it's triggered by the, uh, the electricity company?
No.
No?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Electricity company does not trigger anything.
Okay.
It's triggered by when you, in, in demand response and for any of these kind of issues.
But if say if there's a shortage in the area, and overall...
Then it, then it would be called by, the ISO would call, and, and they're the ones that would dispatch, and they would connect with the town to turn on the generator, not Eversource.
Okay.
Eversource can't do that.
No, but it's, it's through the ISO.
Yeah.
Now, would they do that in, in, uh, anticipating, uh, a power failure, or just only if there was...
They do that in anticipation of it. They try to prevent power failure. That's what the whole objective of the demand response program is, is prevent a loss of power. Can't do anything if a storm comes through, you know, and actually takes a tree down.
Right.
But to anticipate, like, last August, the eleventh, the Millstone, which is the largest generator in New England now, failed, tripped offline for three hours, and the ISO dispatched all, all, everything to keep the power grid up. But the side effect of that is, when that happens, that the wholesale price of power spiked for thirty minutes to three dollars a kilowatt hour.
Wow.
And then averaged to one dollar fifty cents a kilowatt hour in three hours. And all that is gonna be recovered in the next round of rate increases that were coming down the pipe.
All right. More questions?
No.
Okay, I will get...
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make a motion that we table this for further review and analysis, and we'll check on the, we'll check on the status.
Okay.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries, so, last item, Bill, um, a report on the microgrid, but you, you said you were gonna just kinda...
Yeah.
Focus on the canopies first, right?
Yeah. Um, the... Microgrid was the first thing we tried to do.
I'm having a flashback that I'm in drafting class.
Yeah. Was the, in, in our, putting the project, the conservation project moving forward, and when Ameresco put it together and we were looking at the economics, uh, there were two key problems that we couldn't make work. Under the, the microgrid, uh, program that the state's running through deep, you had to have critical, uh, facilities, uh, in the grid, and you had to have enough generation, uh, in the grid to, to cover whatever your peak was, plus surplus, uh, have some surplus left over. Those were, were key items, and also not to mention that, that the largest grant was two, two million dollars to, to do the microgrid. We couldn't make it work then. We didn't have a critical facility, we had a high school, which is gonna be sort of critical because it's a, you know, emergency shelter, but that's all we had in there. What they're saying critical would be things like, uh, grocery stores and, and service stations and police departments and this kind of a thing. So now that we have the new police building coming up there, uh, and also, 'cause we have the eight hundred kilowatt generator at the high school now, uh, and three hundred K W generator regardless of whether it's a tier two or tier four at the, at the police station, we now have a critical facility, we also have enough generation, because the base load of the microgrid has to be some renewable or a clean energy like Cogen or whatever, and we would have a fuel cell if we're gonna get a lot of fuel cell. Uh, so we would, we could put all that together, plus the, the largest grant we can have now is four million dollars. So we think we have a good case to go forward, which is the application's gonna be submitted this month, by the end of the month, uh, for the microgrid, and what the intention is, is to be able to, to, when the grid goes down, we have two feeds going in the school park, one from plum trees and one from, uh, Greenwood, and, uh, be able to tie those two together between the high school and the middle school, and then separate that whole grid to include Reynolds Ridge when the power goes down.
So that's what this dotted red line is, that's the tie?
That's the tie.
Which does, currently does not exist.
Yeah. And so that, that's, that's what it would be, the fuel, the four hundred K W fuel cell, and interesting if we're successful in doing this, fuel cells like solar are class one renewable in Connecticut. But if we do that, uh, with the landfill, solar, and with the fuel cell, we'll be getting, uh, roughly six million one hundred thousand kilowatt hours annually generated locally. Then if we get, whatever we get from, you know, if we're successful in getting the solar canopies up, we'd be pretty much, uh, more than fifty percent of our energy using electricity will be green and, and Bethel. So we'll probably be one of the leaders, or if not the leader, in terms of municipalities and having green, green power.
Mm-hmm.
And the nice thing about fuel cell is, this one that we're looking at is, is the dose center was created by United Technologies, they're the one that developed it, it's now owned by a, a Korean company. But it, it's very reliable, it's been around for many years, uh, it's very level, flat output of power. It generates hot water that could replace, could be connected to the boiler plant in the high school, so that we could probably, uh, almost get rid of any purchase of, of almost get rid of any purchase of, of fuel for the boilers at the high school. Cause we can feed that hot water out of that into the inlet of the boilers and keep them warm and provide whatever we need there. We have the natural gas at the corner of Judd Avenue and three oh two. So everything is suited right there. Fuel cell, the gas applied to a fuel cell, there's no, no Eversource charge for the transmission distribution of gas. Uh, that's under the law promoting fuel cells in Connecticut. The reason we go with this one rather than a fuel cell energy fuel cell, the fuel cell energy fuel cell is not suited for commercial buildings. Uh, one thing, it cannot load follow, so that it can't follow a load going up and down where this one can. And the, the, uh, other fuel cell out there, the, the one that I've heard, you've heard of Bloom Energy, they make a different technology. They're all three different technologies. That one cannot load follow either, plus it's higher cost and higher maintenance.
So what's the, if things go the way you hope they do, what's the timetable on something like this?
Well, the timetable, I understand it is the, the announcement of awards will be made in March, and if we're successful, then, uh, Ameresco was using Schneider Electric as the engineer, they've been getting, getting all the data that we need to put this, this thing together. So hopefully we can make it, make it happen. We get a grant large enough to make it happen.
That's.
So you would be producing electricity year round?
Yeah, fuel cell would be running seven by twenty four.
Um, the fuel cell is four forty KW?
Four hundred and forty KW, run, based, looking at maybe.
And that'll run all those buildings?
No, no, because you'll be, we're connected behind the load meter of the high school. What the high school doesn't use, it goes out and to the microgrid and feeds the other buildings, and then when we're, and, and while the utility grid is up, you know, is going into the grid, everything is together. If the grid goes down, then you have the fuel cell and the main generator of the high school, eight hundred kilowatt generator come up and they would parallel together.
Oh, so the generator would still back it up?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you still need, because that, that allows us to pick up the load for all of the buildings.
All right, so, so the utility reclosure is only during power outages?
Yeah.
That it goes out?
Yeah, yeah, they open and boom, and power outages.
All right, so you're not feeding back into the, the regular system?
And I have talked to CLMP about, or Eversource, about tying those two services together, and he said, yeah, we can do that.
Question, question is, Rich, help me here. Uh, the high school, we're, we're right now upgrading the, the electronics to accommodate the generator. How does this?
Oh, they would fit in.
Would it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they have to be engineered together.
Cause we're, we're engineering as we go along, correct?
Have, have you been in contact with Doug on, on, on that work that's going on with the panels?
I'm familiar with it, but, and he's, he's described it to me, but I mean, that's, that's not a big issue with, with it.
So if, if we can hook up the new generator to the new panels, then we can do this too, right?
Yeah, because we'd be hooking it up to the utility, right, right, right behind the, the service, the utility meter.
Yeah.
Would be, be connected in.
Okay.
And I, so I'm thinking that what I wanna do is if we're successful in this, have then include the cost of the, take some of the transfer switch cost from the police station, put it in.
Yeah.
In here.
And when, would you know about that? Wouldn't we know about the grant?
March we're supposed to know.
March, oh, well, that would certainly help. Um, just, Bill, I just throwing this question out. Why wouldn't you use a larger, uh, fuel cell? Is that limited to?
Oh, you can put two of them in, I mean, I mean, that's as high as they may.
Oh, yeah, all right, so that, that's.
The Blooms are two hundred KW, and they're, they're smaller, but they're not the right technology. They're physically, they're about, take about the same size, just smaller, they're just shorter in size. And the fuel cell energy one, if you go out and look at, over at, at, uh, uh, Triangle Avenue where a fuel cell is built in that zone.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's a, uh, that's a three point seven megawatt unit there. That technology is more suited for utility application. This is the one that's more suited for commercial buildings.
So when, when you get this all, all together, and, and again, you probably would have an operator that would, similar to the other programs, that would buy into this and then sell the power back to us. So it's no really?
Yeah, yeah.
The town isn't putting the money out?
Well, Dozen, Dozen has that now. They will, they have a, a energy service for twenty years, and they will install this fuel cell, own it and everything, and, and sell you power. They guarantee you the power at one and a half cent a kilowatt hour below what you could get at other places. So.
So, I mean, that's what you're going for? You're not looking for the town to spend?
No, we're not looking for the town to put the money, no. We don't wanna do anything.
And, and the maintenance behind the system is also outside of the town, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's all, yeah.
No, because we don't have the expertise.
No, this is, this is.
That's what's blocking, blocking.
High tech.
How big is this unit and where would it sit on the campus?
It would sit, uh, in a spot that reasonably, obviously reduces cost of piping hot water into the boiler plant.
Yeah.
But it's, uh, twenty eight feet long, uh, eight feet wide and nine feet tall. Then it has a, a cooling module. If you don't use all of the heat.
Yeah.
Then it radiates out. They can set that on top of the, of the unit.
Okay. It could go on the other side of the old tennis courts there on the.
Yeah.
You know, what, what, what we could do is, is if you like to play tennis, well, we did, I put four, two hundred kilowatt fuel cells, this technology, and a data center in Omaha back in nineteen ninety eight. And the interesting technology, because if you have a cogenerator that generates both hot water for use and electricity, you have to keep the delta temperature between that water going out and cooling and coming back within twenty degrees or you have thermal problems. Not this. As long as you get the water back slushy ice, it's okay. What we did is we, we provided the heat would, would cascade down and provide space heating, and then would cascade down to do some heating, maybe for domestic hot water services. And then ran it out and in front of the new data center, they put buried coils in the walkway, and so we run that through the winter and it melts and keeps it so clean. So we can keep the tennis courts dry during the winter if you wanna play tennis with a fuel cell.
Ju- just, uh, as, on a safety issue, how safe are these units? You know, we're, we're, you know, that's where all our schools are, it'd be.
Yeah, these are, this is the safest technology. It takes natural gas, it's low pressure, it's about ten to fourteen inches of water column, which is very, very low pressure. And it reforms, it's not, it's not a combustion process. It, uh, it chemically reforms the, the, strips the hydrogen off of the natural gas, and the hydrogen then goes in and reacts with oxygen, uh, and generates water.
So you're, you're, you're heat, you're heating water, you're not making steam?
No, we're just, we're just making water, yeah. And, and we have a couple, maybe four or five gallons of water an hour coming out of the thing. So that would be, that's the waste, that's the waste. That's not the hot water that's circulated to the.
So are you looking for a, a motion to move forward on this?
I don't think you need one. I think you just need to wait.
Educate you as well. We'll bring the proposals.
Yeah, when you, when you, when you, when you get to March and you know.
Yeah, there's three letters that you're gonna have to sign.
Okay.
Basically, we've gotta give the state proof that, written proof and written certification, that the owner of the property is not against putting a generator on their property.
Well, then I think, I think we need a motion to authorize you to sign it.
Well, do, do you have the language of that now?
No, I've gotta get that.
When do you need it? Is that urgent?
Uh, I'm gonna get on next day or so to get the, to get the documents.
Can it wait till the nineteenth?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so if you get us the documents, then we can approve the actual.
I, I think we should do a, a regular motion to, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
That way there's, you know, he said.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll, I'll put a motion on the floor to authorize the Energy Conservation Committee to move forward with the microgrid project.
Second.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill, while you're here, when, when are we gonna cut ribbon?
They keep saying next week, next week.
They're saying next week since September.
Get the final, final.
I think that, that we, last couple of weeks, I've been waiting for Eversource to come through and do their inspection.
Probably, yeah, cause Eversource has got to give you final authorization to turn it on.
Which is the story of my life. Eversource was, I mean, of all the sins that could be committed, they, they held up the, the brewery.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they're still waiting on it.
I know it.
But that's, yeah, we can't do it until they sign off.
Just a quick question, uh, the two schools that we're renovating, Johnson and Rockwell, let's see, there are fifty two KW generators in there. Do those generators need to be bigger?
Those are not generators, those are just the load.
Yeah, but.
That's just the load.
But should we be putting generators in there in the renovations?
If you could, that helps. I mean, that's extra backup.
Other than emergency services, I mean, um.
Yeah, if you could put a generator, go tier four, so.
Well, okay, well.
Is it possible to put, is there any such thing as a genera, a tier four that's large enough to power both schools?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, Williams College, for example, in Williamstown, they purchased two, uh, two megawatt tier two generators, big ones. And when the, the feds made this action, they went out and sold those and bought two tier four generators.
Oh, okay.
What size is this one on here, you know?
A hundred and fifty KW, cause it's, it's, it's money that, you know, comes in that.
Yeah.
You get, you know, every bit that you can help get.
Okay.
And the last contract that, that they just entered into with, with Constellation for Electricity is very compatible with all these programs, because we could take advantage of demand response, what's called cat pack management, everything they've positioned it. To be able to, that I was at the meeting, Bob had me when they had Constellation in here, to make sure that we, we wouldn't have any problems.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for your patience.
Pardon me?
See you on the nineteenth, right?
Yeah, 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 see you on the nineteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on to item number eight. Uh, we have a request for approval of a children's book lending library to be installed at the municipal center. And what this is, this is a Girl Scout Gold Award project, which is really pretty cool, cause I do not think we've had a Girl Scout win the gold. It's like the Girl Scout, uh, similar to the Eagle Award. We had a silver, uh, a girl, a young woman reached the silver level a couple of years ago. So what they want to do is put up a thing, a, a stand that looks like this, I don't know if you got, you know, it's got, uh, uh, looks like a little schoolhouse on a stand, and it has doors on the side, flexed glass doors that open up. And it would be stocked with children's books. Uh, parents and kids would be able to grab a book and then leave a book and swap them out, which I think, and I've seen these in many other towns. It's, uh, it's really a good idea.
Where?
Um, it's gonna be, uh, right, right here. Right, see where the, the entrance to the, uh, not the entrance to the gym corridor, but the, oh, yeah, the entrance to the gym corridor, it'd be right there, that little square.
Oh, in that hallway?
Yeah, uh, uh, it's, there's a sculpture there right now, but it'd be right in this area, right by that, by that entrance.
Oh, outside?
Yeah.
Is the entrance that, um, all the kids use to go to the Sharns?
Yeah.
So, what, what's that?
Locked up at night?
They wanna, yeah, they wanna put it right in here.
It's used books.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, people would donate, but, I mean, we've got tons of used kids' books that are in good shape that we could stock that with.
Is it close to the stairs? Uh, my only concern about the location is, uh, when the, a lot of people sit on the steps for the concerts. That's just not in any visible obstruction for the concert people. You know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, all right.
Other than that, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, well, we'll make sure that it's not in a, not in an obstructive location. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the request to locate a children's book lending library at the municipal center near the entrance to the, uh, gymnasium, uh, near the gazebo, on the gazebo side. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries. All right, uh, item number nine, consideration of establishing the annual town meeting date as required by charter. I'll make a motion to establish the date of the annual town meeting as Monday, April fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Time and date to be, do we have to establish time and date right now, but, uh, and location?
Well, time, that's.
Time and location?
I don't think so.
What's that?
I don't think so.
Okay, just the date. Okay, so we'll mo- move to establish the, the town meeting date as Monday, April fourth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Um, number ten, consideration of appointments to, uh, Western Connecticut Council of Government and H, uh, Husatonic Resource Recovery Agency. Okay, so Wes- Western Council, Western Connecticut Council requires the chief elected official to be their, their primary, uh, representative. So I'll make, make a motion to reappoint Matt Nickerbocker as, uh, as the primary.
Second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, who wants to be alternate? Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Richard Straighten as alternate.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so same thing with, well, Husatonic, uh, anybody can do it, anybody we appoint. But seeing as how they made me vice chair this year, I suppose I should, I should do it again. So, make a motion to appoint Matt Nickerbocker as the representative to H R R A?
Second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, anybody, you wanna, who wants? Okay.
I've been there before, so I know.
Yeah, you're, you're.
Cast the characters.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion, make a motion to appoint Richard Straighten as alternate.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
You don't want anything to do with this, do you?
I've done it before.
I know.
I sent him to the dinner the other night, that he spent four hours at.
All right, uh, item number eleven, consideration of legal action considering opioid, uh, litigation. Uh, we're not gonna cover this tonight because actually there are two different law firms now, um, pushing forward with class action lawsuits uh, regarding the pharmaceutical industry and, and the opioid, opioid crisis. So I gave Marty, uh, both of those things, and I'd like to just have the town attorney take a look at them and see if he can make a repri- a repri- recommendation as to which one that the town might want to consider joining. So the, the basic issue here is that there are, uh, in fact, these are lawsuits that are popping up around the country. Um, there are allegations being made against the pharmaceutical industry that they have engaged in deceptive advertising practices, uh, that they have downplayed the danger of opioids in advertising to the medical community, that they have, uh, formed, they've, uh, engaged in similar tactics, tactics that the tobacco industry did, which was, they made a, what, they made a quasi-scientific sounding institute, which was actually a front where they, they refuted, uh, data that would indicate that smoking was dangerous. So it's, it is being alleged and charged, uh, and I wanna stress the word alleged, that the pharmas- pharmaceutical industry has engaged in similar practices uh, to boost sales of, of opioids. And lastly, it is alleged that they have failed to follow federal guidelines and, and laws with regard to following up on unusual shipments. Uh, there are federal laws that require manufacturers, pharmaceutical manufacturers to follow up on any kind of suspicious shipment that might indicate that product is being diverted illegally. So, uh, what was in CBS report, uh, several months ago was some little town in one of the plains states, uh, population of something like fifteen hundred that had been, had received something like five hundred thousand doses of, of stuff, which clearly could not have been, uh, prescribed locally. So, uh, there are lawsuits that really aim to do two things. One is force the pharmaceutical companies to restrict these things and make them, uh, not as available. And number two, reimburse communities like Bethel for the cost of dealing with the opioid crisis. So what we have, have to spend on training, uh, for our first responders, equipping, uh, police cars and ambulances and paramedic vehicles with Narcan, uh, any other associated costs with prevention, which I don't have a handle on right now anyway. So, uh, we don't have to make a decision on this tonight. I've turned the materials over to Marty to, uh, to review and, uh, maybe offer a recommendation at an upcoming meeting. Uh, other area towns are looking at this, uh, they, and the decision timeline is, say, between January first and February, uh, twenty eighth, to, to decide whether or not we wanna join this. So that's what I have so far.
I have problems with that.
Oh, with, yeah.
I come from the pharmaceutical industry, and I know what litigation is, and I know what safety measures are imposed upon. But to get a town involved, I can understand for paying for Narcan and all that, but I'm sorry, it's, it's not the pharmaceutical companies, it's the, sometimes it's the prescribers.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And sometimes, sometimes it's the distribution system.
Yeah.
It's, it's a sticky wicket.
Can I just make a comment? Oh, you're right, they, the lawsuits are not only involved with the manufacturers, many of them are distributors. But I'll tell you this, one of the things that's come out in the, in the litigation so far is that the doctors had no idea. They were being told something completely different by the, by the manufacturers and the distributors. So you don't see hardly, I don't think there's very, very few doctors that have been sued. It's all the manufacturers and the distributors.
Yeah.
There's a, well, Matt knows, Waterbury's already started a suit. And what's happening is, just what you said, the local firm here that's, that's trying to get on board, they said that they're gonna know about Brookfield shortly, Milford, I think, and even Danbury. They've made pitches to them, and they expect sometime in the beginning of the year. And the other thing that I thought was interesting was that one of the manufacturers, I think Pharma, if I have that name right, they've been hit with a bunch of lawsuits, they've proposed setting up a fund, like what they did for asbestos.
Right.
So, you know, if the town's gonna get involved, I think they should get involved early to be a part of that, if it's gonna happen.
Part of it's also Purdue Fredericks. Purdue Fredericks.
Yes, 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 that's right.
Yeah, it's, it's a sticky wicket, you know, you, you don't know, well, we'll, we'll go forward with this.
Yeah, well, well, yeah, we'll, we'll, we, consider it, and we could even get, probably get some people in to do presentations if you wanna see the, you know, what they have to, to say about it. So we'll, we'll just leave this on the table for now. Item 12, consideration of removal of the South Street Fire Station from the Public Site and Building Committee agenda. Because they have received their CO. Yep.
It goes back a while, it's just, they've been carrying it, and they said they've never been authorized from the board of selectmen to take it off their agenda, so they would like to get it off their agenda.
So I'll make a motion that we remove the South Street Fire Station from the Public Site and Building Committee agenda and close out the project.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Could you send them the letter?
Bob, I thought Bob was gonna be here.
Yeah.
But I do, I can tell you the 49164 includes the vehicle and the attachments.
Okay.
We have, we have a proposal for that?
I don't have a proposal.
No. I think we should table that, because
I'd, I'd like to discuss that a little bit, okay?
Sure, okay, well, it's on, it's on the table.
There, there's a couple of things that are bothering me. First of all, if you recall, the last vehicle we had, Redding offered to pay a third, they did not. And my question comes down to, I don't know, either Matt or Marty, when is this paramedic agreement with, was it Danbury Hospital?
Yeah, Western Connecticut Health, Health Systems.
When, when does this end?
It's, I think it's
I don't know what year it is, but it's in like, early, it's like July, June or July.
This year, or around next year or the following?
Well, what happens is there's automatic renewal provisions.
I think it, I think it, I think it ends in 2019, but I'll check. But you're, you're right, by the way, Redding did an offer to pay, I asked them to pay, and they initially said yes, and then they said no.
Yeah.
So
Just, just on that principle alone, I'd like to back out of Redding. You know, if we have to pay for the vehicle, and secondly, how many miles does the current vehicle have?
I'm, I'm thinking it's something like 140,000, but I could be wrong about that, I'll, that's, that's, that's a guess, I'll withdraw that comment. I, I'd, I'd rather wait for Bob to, to be here.
Okay.
And I wanna make sure that we have the actual quote, and that we can be assured that it's on the state bid too. So that we don't have to go through the process.
You know, what, what is the current year of that vehicle, and some general information?
Yeah.
It seems like we just
Cause I know we just, we did one about a year ago.
Yeah, it's actually been, it's been two years, but it was the other one, you know, we have two.
Yeah.
So, well, I'll just make a motion to table that one.
Okay.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. How much you wanna bet Bob's gonna show up in about 10 minutes thinking that it's, our meeting was at 7? Well, that happens, that's alright, so that concludes our long agenda, lots of follow up. We'll have lots of things on the next, next one, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you very much. Back to work.